I always meet like here. It's always different. It's always just so you can see this is where I have been. I really enjoy it. It's the part of life. It's always like that. You're sometimes.
Exactly. Just, just think about how we are on both sides. Yeah.
Yeah, I remember you here all the time.
No.
It's been a while. It's just been a while. Yeah. I've been in the valley almost forty.
Do you see yours? No, I don't come to the meetings for after.
No, I mean, I do see yours.
Oh. I, I, I do less. I'm, I mean, I do not do less. I'm very busy. I stay home. Thank you for saying hi. I brought Willie.
You're back.
Wonderful.
You're back.
I'm back. She's better.
I left Newark, New Jersey at six.
This is the thing, and this is for the folks who use the law. Yeah.
Hi, Joni. I'd be older than that. I love what she's gonna say. Pass that off. Uh, where do you want to sit?
Anywhere. Is that good? Either way.
Called order the regular meeting of the Sauvage City Council for July eleventh, twenty sixteen. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Deuce.
President.
Jameson.
Here.
Skid.
President.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Uh, here. Will you stand with me for the pledge, please? Lisa, hand over your heart and your feet after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City managers report.
Uh, two things to report. One, um, we've had a couple of false alarms on when the striping's gonna happen on, on Mission Drive, and it is supposed to happen tonight at eight o'clock. So hopefully when we're out of this meeting and you'll see the striper working. They had a flat tire, what I understand, on the striping vehicle, so. And then second, I'd like to report that we think we're back on TV. Dale, is that?
We are.
We are.
Good shot.
With audio.
That's scary.
Carlo's very happy to see Fred's smiling face, uh, about, uh, ten after six, uh, this evening.
Uh, next is public communications written or verbal. At this time, please direct comments to the city council regarding consent calendar items or matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Ah, my sweetheart, Willie Campbell comes first. Followed by Bruce Porter. It's good to see you, Willie.
It's nice of you to open the door for me. Uh, this is one of my first outings and, uh, but you all are important, as you will hear. Uh, I have a couple of things on my mind. I'll probably do both of them very quickly because you have a wonderful meeting ahead and I'm going back to my hidey hole. But the first thing is I want you all to feel personally invited to our ribbon cutting at the Tai Chi Garden, uh, at five o'clock on the nineteenth, uh, a week from tomorrow. Uh, we are very proud of what we have accomplished. Tai Chi is one of three exercise disciplines at the center. Uh, we have an arthritis group, Pilates, and the Tai Chi. And some brilliant soul thought we should take that group outside so they could exercise in the morning air. What else works for you? Uh, so I wanted to reassure you and the half dozen people listening to me, uh, on television that it is not public money that we are using. The generous donation for which our whole board thanks you, uh, helps enormously with the day-to-day oiling, the things that we do, the meals we serve, the lights we turn on, the people, nice people we hire. Uh, all of those fundamental basics are paid for by taxpayers and their funding. And we didn't want them to get the idea that we were so out of it that we would spend their money for extras. Now, this was an inspiration, uh, that somebody thought we could do more nicely than anybody around, and we were so happy to accommodate it and to celebrate them. So please come at five o'clock, a week from Tuesday if you can. We'll be thrilled to have you. We didn't bring a mayor newsletter, which the rest of you got, but it's because he's a card-carrying member, and we know he got one in the mail. Uh, the other thing, I felt it was important even to leave the nose hose behind, uh, to talk to you about how proud I am most of the time, all every Tuesday, and when I remember to think about you, for the service that you offer to this community over and over again in mundane ways. I am so, have been through the whole primary campaign, so offended by one of the candidates. Uh, and I know I've been remiss in not coming before, but I have a good excuse. I've been sick. And, uh, so I wanna say that what makes this country great is city councils like us. Uh, to call somebody a politician as if it was a term of disapproval. What I like to think of us all as being is public servants. What we do in, uh, these little meetings is parks and streets and the things that matter to people, and that's what improves their life. Shut up, machine. And my, my breathing machine knows I'm not breathing at it, so I hope you'll forgive it. But anyway, uh, I want you to know that if it's being a politician to show up and run for office every four years, it's not a thing to be proud of. And so I, you have my thanks and the thanks of all the people in this community. And come, let us celebrate together at the ribbon cutting for the Tai Chi Garden and to celebrate the fact that your senior center is not just the ordinary run-of-the-mill senior center, but we have people with vision and purpose and who are going to make us shiny bright in the city of Sauvage, too. Okay, thanks for your time.
Uh, Willie? Willie?
Yes.
We, we have to thank you for what you've done for this city. It was on your shoulders that this city was, was incorporated and on the work, the, the work you did and the, and, and it was an honor to, to know you and to have you as the very first mayor of Sauvage. I don't know if a lot of people know that little fact, but you were, you were the heart and the start of this city at the time, and it's greatly appreciated by those of us who live here now. I wanna thank you personally for that.
Thank you. Not necessary.
I'd add, like to add a little bit. I've known you, Willie, since way before you even thought of being a mayor. Um, before Sauvage even thought about being a city. The only other one I've probably known longer is Ed. Um, but, uh, Willie, it's good to see you here again. We've missed ya.
Thank you. I can be a recurring presence, not just on the other end of the TV.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Much love.
Good seeing you.
Bruce Porter, followed by Fred Koval.
A difficult act to follow. Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm here today just to say thank you for several things. Uh, a, a, a group of others from the valley and myself have just returned from Omaha, where we were out inspecting the new community pool that we are buying to place on the grounds of San Andres High School. I'm gonna thank you all for the seed money to get that started. Um, several hundred thousands of dollars later now, through, uh, private money, we are well on the road to, uh, replacing our fifty-year-old pool and create what's gonna be a truly great aquatics facility for, uh, every portion of this community, from the school kids to younger kids that need, uh, swim lessons, older folks like some of us, perhaps programs for the senior center, and a lot of other things. So y'all made that possible getting started, and I wanna thank you that, for that very much. Changed hat, put on my American Legion and VFW hat. Thank you so much for being great stewards of our Veterans Memorial Building. It's not cheap to maintain, especially as the years go by, but thank you so much for staying committed to keeping that a, 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 a true class facility that many portions of our committee or, of our community can use. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Fred Koval.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Fred Koval, Sauvage. Traffic, July the fourth, must've been great for the city. Not great if you're trying to get into the city. Believe me, it was backed up coming east all the way back to the orchard farm. Uh, orchard, excuse me, ostrich farm. Uh, uh, so one of the major issues I have, and I've spoken to the mayor about, and that is just the north-south Alisal Road, left turns, dedicated left-turn arrow. It's, it's, it's really needed. The backup that's occurring, just coming up from the south end, from the river folks trying to get up through here, that something's gotta change in that regard. Uh, I also would like to have you guys entertain that we're allowed to speak separately on the consent calendar, not lump it in with public communications. I think since you guys get to take anything off you want, the consent calendar, and speak about it, the public should be able to do that, too, separately on that, because those are really agenda items. It, they really are. The last item is, and I've spoke to this, to you about this many times, and the mayor has picked up the beat and has really done some tremendous research, and that's associated with this Water District ID Number One parcel tax. Somehow, all you people on the council need to get behind this to make it known that you're against this new added water bill. That's, you know, you won't see it. I've had it for many years. Elementary school, uh, tax. The high school wants a new, uh, tax on our, on our parcels. Where is it gonna end? As soon as we pay off the elementary school here, they're gonna be wanting another one. So it all keeps adding up, and it's making very uncomfortable for a lot of people to live here. You know, I, I just, uh, there's gonna be a breaking point for a lot of people in this valley. We just gotta stop adding to it. And, uh, uh, this water sewer, uh, that just keeps getting bigger and bigger every year. How much is that a part of, of my income, of everybody else's income in this city? Things have gotta change. Things have really gotta change. Maybe we need some new blood sitting up there. Maybe that might help.
Thank you, Fred. I have no other speakers listed. Is anyone in the audience wish to speak? Don?
My name is Don McFadyen, and, uh, I'm a resident of Sauvage. Uh, I would like to plead with the city council to try and do something about the intersection of Alisal and Copenhagen. Uh, we're a tourist town, and tourists go where they feel, but somehow you gotta stop them from crossing the street one at a time and let some traffic through. The, the, the trolley goes slower than the seven-year itch. It's bad enough, but we realize that's kind of necessary in our, our community, but please come up with some kind of a traffic signal or a pedestrian signal. Uh, they have a couple of them in Aurora Grande, I've noticed, uh, where the pedestrian can push a button and change the, stop traffic and, and then go in all directions and then stop it for a while, put a timer on it. Uh, but please, do something about that. You just can't get through. If you wanna go east from, if you're, if you're, if you're south of town and you wanna go east, forget it. You gotta go all the way around, uh, down Fifth Street and all the way around. It's just, it's kinda foolish. I'm asking you, please, come up with an idea on that intersection. Thanks.
Thank you, Don. So noted. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Sorry. I have a speaker's slip, but I thought I would speak. It's, I-
You, do you want, do you want, this, you want, this is public comment? Do you wanna wait for the library?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We got you, surely.
Okay.
Seeing none, we'll come back to the, uh, council for council comments and requests. Would you like to start, Joni?
You might notice that there are fewer people at Nielsen's Market, Rite Aid, the parking lot is not quite so full. What does that mean? That means the county fair is, is in Santa Maria, and everybody, we are very much a, an agricultural community when it comes to the county fair. Everybody has a chicken or a turkey or a pig or a steer or you name it, a lamb, and they go up there and they spend a week and they have a great time. And I would encourage all of you out there in TV land and all of you here to please go up and support the 4H and the FFA kids. They work hard all year long, so thank you. Uh, it's nice to have TV on. I'm assuming it's on. I haven't gotten an alert yet that it's not on, so hopefully it's working. And then thank you to the Rotary Clubs for the great Fourth of July. It was fun. Um, it wasn't too hot, which was nice. Uh, there were a lot of people, and, um, it's a very nice thing to do to celebrate our country. Thank you.
Mr. Deuce.
Yeah, thanks, uh, thanks to the Rotary. Again, another great, um, great parade, great, um, fireworks, um, great day, and, um, thanks for keeping the, um, the weather nice. Um, just, uh, one, uh, one question, um, and I haven't heard anything about the sphere of influence, um, lately. Uh, where, where are we at on that?
Uh, we've, if, the direction of the council is to move slowly on that. We did notify all the, the property owners. I think we got about maybe twenty-five, thirty percent responded, uh, and were interested. So, um, we could accelerate that, but, yeah, the process, if you recall, is, we've gotta do quite a few steps to, to go anywhere, but we need to-
Yeah.
-decide what areas the council would like to, to formally look at, and we can bring an item before you to, to decide that if you wanna move in that direction, but.
Yeah, I, I'd, I'd like to have, I'd like to have some, uh-
Get some nods of the heads, and we'll, we can bring it back.
I, I'd like to know who's interested at this point in time.
Yeah, we would bring that back.
That's what I, that's what I would like to know.
I think we've sent that, but we can, would definitely put it on agenda items so people know. We'll bring that back.
That'll be good.
And those are my comments.
Mr. Skid.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Richardson. Uh, I was not here for the Fourth of July, but I know at my Rotary meetings prior to that, there was a great deal of preparation, uh, for the parade and the picnic afterwards. And if it was any, as successful as it has in the past, it wa, I'm assuming it was a very successful weekend in regards to that. And in regards to, then one thing I always talk about is Lake Kachun is now down to about twenty-six thousand acre feet. Uh, it is now down to ninety percent, or ninety feet below fall. Uh, I believe in about the next, next two to three weeks, we will be seeing another seven, eight thousand acre feet of water going down the river, and depending on whose figures you utilize, it will take us close to the Deadpool on that one, uh, at that point there, where there, nobody will be able to take water. We will see what happens with the count, with the city and south coast of Santa Barbara tries to do with that one there. Uh, in regards to, I'm gonna agree with Mr. Koval in regards to the left turn lights on Alisal at Copenhagen, uh, on the north-south axis of that intersection. Uh, they've been needed for years, and we still haven't been able to get Caltrans to say they are a justified, uh, uh, comm, uh, requirement, but sooner or later, they're gonna have to put one in there. And in regards to the tourist walking across the intersection at Copenhagen and Alisal, I agree with you entirely. I've seen too many, I, I call, call them circus parades, where one person starts and then he gets about four feet into the crosswalk and somebody else, so you have a, a train of about twenty people going across them, uh, really slowing the traffic. We need, really need to see what we can do in regards to that. But other than that, that's, those are my comments for tonight, and glad everybody showed up tonight.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Just wanna welcome everybody. Thank you for all showing, uh, showing up tonight, and it's nice to see you, Willie. Thanks for coming tonight, and I look forward to a wonderful meeting. Thank you.
I, I, I want to say to the Rotary, what a fantastic job was done for the parade. Uh, it was, it was run with military precision, I believe, in the startup, and it was a fantastic parade. The, uh, the interesting thing while riding in it is the number of people that were in our town that day. The, uh, the, the people were six, five, six, and seven deep watching the parade and, in the shade, in the sun. It wasn't so deep, in the shade. And then, and then I wanna thank the city for put, for sponsoring one of the rides, one of the rides, the, uh, the truck, uh, and having the city council on it. The mayor rode in a different car. That's another story. And I wanna thank-
We wouldn't let him ride with us.
I wanna thank, I wanna thank the sponsors that, that, um, that allowed me to ride in their car. And, uh, you know, Fred brought up an interesting thing, and I wasn't gonna talk about it, but I think I will since Fred brought it up, is the, you know that, uh, we're doing a, a water rate study. We're gonna talk about that tonight, but, uh, ID One has already done their water rate study, and they've determined that, that we in the city of Sauvage are going to be paying an ad valorem tax on, on our use of their water. I want you to remember that, that over a period of ten years, our impact on their water system is less than point one percent. They're going to tax us at thirty-six percent. Thirty-six percent of their revenues will be coming out of the city of Sauvage for less than one-tenth of one percent of the water that we use. Uh, that's outrageous. I, I don't know what we're gonna be able to do about it, but I think that, that everybody ought to be aware and, uh, consider, uh, the impact that's gonna be. That thirty-six percent amounts to two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars taken out of our, of our, uh, economics for our city. They're asking for seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Thirty-six percent of that is two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars taken out of our economy for just very little water. They claim that, uh, that they have to charge us that because we're, of our impact on their system, but they neglect to remember that their water rates that they charge us were to make up for that impact on the water system. We pay fifty-nine and a half percent more for our water from the, from ID One than do the domestic users in, uh, in ID, in ID One's territory. So, uh, keep that in the back of your mind, that, uh, that in your next tax bill, you're gonna see a, uh, a tax for you, an ad valorem tax for ID One of whatever percentage it is on your property. Uh, on with, uh, on with the agenda. We've received correspondence. Do we wanna talk about that? Okay. On to, uh, the approval of the agenda. Does anybody wanna to shuffle the agenda, seeing only we had one item? Uh, on the council minutes of June twenty-seventh, are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes, and if not, can I have a motion, please?
Moving. Except.
There a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, all pass. On the consent agenda, does anybody wish to pull any of the consent items? Well, in that case, I want to pull item, uh, six B. Would you read that, please, Lisa?
Item six B, second reading of proposed amendment to Title Four, Chapter Ten, Amending Regulations for Massage, Massage Establishments.
This, did you wanna do a presentation?
Well, this is the second reading. You, you did discuss this at your last meeting. Um, I don't know if the, if you wanna address your concern, then we can have the city attorney maybe comment on that, the concern you had about the-
Yes, the concern I had was the, uh, the certificate requirement, uh, from the CM, C A M T C, which is their, uh, evidently their certificate for therapists, uh, massage therapists. The requirements for those to, to graduate from now are five, five hundred hours now. In the past, it was two-hundred-and-fifty hours. Uh, we, uh, as a, uh, as a city are allowed to determine who gets business licenses regarding massage therapy, and, uh, I felt that, uh, that the two-hundred-and-fifty hours, since there's a five-hundred-hour requirement, the two-hundred-and-fifty hours is not sufficient to, uh, to grant a business license. And I propose that we grandfather in the current business license holders until September thirtieth and after, and October the first, that we require any new massu, massage parlor, uh, or license, massage licenses to go to the five-hundred-hour, uh, requirement. The California Massage Therapy Council with certificate.
So are you saying we should grandfather them in or we should not grandfather them in?
We should grandfather those in that are, that have licenses in the city until September the thirtieth. After September the thirtieth, any new licenses to be granted will require five-hundred-hour certificates.
Do you realize what a hardship that's going to be?
Do you realize that-
For people who have been massage therapists for years?
Yes, I understand that. I also understand the, the, there's a reason, there's a reason that that requirement was increased or doubled because there must be some, some legitimate reason that the, that their council, their, uh, that the California Massage Therapy Council seems to think that five-hundred hours, uh, is, is more appropriate than two-hundred-and-fifty hours for whatever reason. Uh, it makes the, it makes the, uh, the certificate more treasured. They will be less apt to, to violate their codes if they're going to lose their certi, certification. So, uh, those massage therapists that are already doing businesses in the city can be grandfathered in. Any new ones that come to the city, uh, should, should be required to have the five-hundred-hour certificate.
But at one time, they were licensed. They were fully licensed, and that's kind of like an ex post facto law in a way. They're saying, no, you're not licensed anymore because the law changed. They don't do that- They don't do that, they don't do that to doc, they don't do that to doctors. They don't take their license away because there are, there are...
We're not taking their license away, we're taking their ability to get a license in the city.
I know, so that you're going to have them outside the city.
Well, that's fine.
I have a question. So does each massage therapist have to have a business license, license individually?
Yes, that's typically how they're done, yeah. Say, the Alisal Ranch, they have one as the Alisal, and then the individual masseuses are contractors, so they all have, have to get an individual one. And that's historically always been how the city has done it. When we used to issue massage permits ten years ago, they each, each masseuse had to get their own business certificate. And the, the four that are, that we are under discussion, I guess one of the reasons we, we came back to the council with this change have been historically always held their licenses, just they couldn't this year because we changed the ordinance to say you had to have the C M A T C certificate. And so there was four that had always been massage therapists in the city, but no longer could, could get a business certificate because we changed that. So that's, that was the intent of this modification to the ordinance, is allow those to four to come back and have their, continue to have their, their business certificate.
I think it is a hardship on the individual, if it's based on that. Especially if they've already been doing business and they're in a neighboring city, and if they want to do business here, I don't know, that seems a little rigid. Do you think, do you think that's a bit rigid on the business, I guess, individual? Since it is an individual...
No, if, if there is a business in the city right now, any business, they can continue doing business in the city, but when a new, a new business comes to town that wants to be licensed, they should be licensed at the, at their therapy council numbers.
Well, that's not what you're saying, though. You're saying you want the people that are in business now to have to go back out and get the extra, the additional two-hundred-and-fifty hours.
No, I didn't.
You didn't say that? That's the way it sounded.
Well, that's not what I mean. I mean to say, those that are, those that are in business already can continue to stay in business with their two-hundred-and-fifty-hour certificates. Any new businesses that come to town, the masseuses are required to have the five-hundred-hour certificate.
Well, I agree with that, but you said as of September thirtieth, they were going to have to have two-hundred-and-fifty more hours.
They, any new businesses that start after September, as of October the first,
Then you did not make yourself very clear.
They require the five-hundred-hour certificate. I'm sorry if I didn't come out like I thought it should, but...
Well, that's obviously what Neil and I heard.
That was why, kind of what I understood.
Okay, I'm sorry, let's start this all over again.
Let me explain how the, how the...
I can, I can support that, as, as long as these are, and I guess my attorney, or our attorney...
I just wanted to explain how the ordinance that's before you for second reading reads as it stands now, which is that your city manager would have the authority to grant a business license to those people who have less than the extra two-hundred-and-fifty, as, who, who do not demonstrate a combination of education, I mean, who can demonstrate that their education and experience equals the standard. So that would give the city manager the authority to grant business licenses to the four that we know of that have basically been in business here for a number of years. And anyone else who came in that had a similar, was in a similar circumstance. They just didn't happen to have been practicing massage therapy in Solvang.
Well, I don't know if I agree with that part of it. I don't want everybody that just has two-hundred-and-fifty hours to figure out, hey, I can come to Solvang now because I happen to have two-hundred-and-fifty hours in the, and we'll just bring the, a box of chocolate to the city manager and he'll approve us.
A box of chocolate, that's what masseuses do.
That's how you get elected mayor.
No, I, I don't agree, I don't agree with that. I, I think that we should take care of the people that are here and that have been in business here. But if there are new people that want to come in, they don't get to come in with two-hundred-and-fifty hours, they get to come in with the full five-hundred. That's just my point of, that's just my point of view.
Even if they've been doing, even if they've been in the business?
But if they've been in the business here in Solvang, yes, but if they've been in the business elsewhere, no, because I think we're going to get a slug of them.
That's right. That's what I think, too. So, and I, and I chose October first as to give any, any new masseuses that come to town before October first and get licensed, they can do it under two-hundred-and-fifty hours.
Yeah, but that's not the way the current ordinance reads. And this ordinance was changed back in two thousand and eleven. And there was time given for people to get the, the extra training. And, but that, that part has expired, and so your staff came back to you and, and, and argued the point that it was a hardship to make those four people do this. But all of the, this is just second reading, so all of the policy considerations are still at the council level. So what you need to do is come to a, a decision of three or more that tells us what you want the rule to be, and then we can draft it that way. So if you can...
It's not illegal to grant, to so-called...
I, I had concerns last time because although it's very common to grandfather uses as two particular pieces of property, it's not common to grandfather persons. And so I was concerned that, and we hadn't discussed the issue before, I was concerned that would be an equal protection issue. But between last meeting and this meeting, I did some legal research on the actual issue, and I did find some case law where grandfathering licenses for not massage, but for other activities was considered legal under the equal protection clause. So what I saw as an issue has been determined by the courts already, at least in similar circumstances, to be okay. That you could in fact grandfather just the known existing licensees and forbid new people that don't meet the current massage council standards.
And I, and I chose the October first date to, because of, for the time, for, to go through the second reading of the change, give a few more days, that if anybody's interested in becoming a masseuse within the city, they have a definite deadline. Not, not at the time that the ordinance becomes effective, but an October first deadline seemed to be a reasonable thing.
Well, those people who were outside the city had a deadline of about two years when the, this, when your current ordinance was drafted in two thousand and eleven. The, the state has changed the rules on us several times over the last decade. But when the council asked to address this in two thousand and eleven, what they did is they basically gave a grace period of two years to, to anybody. That doesn't mean you couldn't grant another grace period, but that, that would...
But we don't have to?
No.
We're not asking the current license holders to increase their requirements?
It's before you draft, to not ask the current license, license holders to increase their education.
They will be grandfathered in, but any other new masseuses that, that desire business licenses have until the first of October to get theirs to two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty? Well, because it's just an easy, easy way to call, set a cutoff date, that's all.
I thought he said we've already set the cutoff date.
Yeah, that expired two years ago.
It expired.
Okay, it expired, it's gone. Why do we want to keep doing that? Why do we want to keep?
Well, because we're going to increase the requirement to five-hundred hours.
That's for the new people. They have to have that anyway in order to get their license. So I don't, I don't understand...
When, let me ask you this, if we, if we change the ordinance, go through another first reading and then a second reading, it becomes effective thirty days after the second reading, no?
That's, it, yes, but the current ordinance already says those people who don't meet the state's standards now are not entitled to get a business license.
Well, you're going to rewrite the ordinance, aren't you? Aren't you going to change a few words in it and to include that?
If, if, only if three council members direct me to.
But it can be changed, that's the point.
Yes, it's, it's your ordinance. The council's in charge of how the ordinance reads.
Okay, I can, I can support existing grandfathered in. I don't see any point in trying to entice someone to come in for a couple months. So I, I won't support that half of it, but the existing, I, I will support on a grandfather clause.
I feel the same way.
That, I, I just wanted to set a date just to be fair to whoever might want to be coming to town, had planned on coming to town. But if that's the case, we can do it at the time the ordinance becomes effective.
So if, if, if I assume that your comment is in agreement with the, the other two, okay. Then I would suggest that a motion be to introduce for first reading by title only the ordinance that's before you with the following changes to paragraph B. We would remove the language that's in paragraph B now and instead insert the following. "Notwithstanding subsection A of this section, those persons who have had a valid Solvang business license since or before June twenty-seven, two thousand and eleven may continue to practice massage therapy." So that would apply to all the people who had pre-existing licenses the last time you addressed this. And those people would be entitled to continue. They would still have to get business licenses every year, but they could continue.
Question, how about, are there any massage therapists who have had, started after two thousand and eleven that only have, only have the two-hundred-and-fifty hours? What would happen to them?
If they started after two thousand and eleven, they wouldn't have been able, they, when we changed the ordinance in two thousand and eleven, any new massage therapist had to comply with the state's standards. But we grandfathered then everybody who complied with the old standards and gave them a period of time to comply with the new standards. So since then...
Yeah, it had a door closer on it, that if they let their business certificate lapse, they lost their grandfather. You had, in two thousand and eleven, we put the, a similar grandfather clause in. And as long as they maintain their business certificate annually, they could continue to use the massage therapy license.
So now, after June twenty-seventh, the requirement is?
June twenty-seventh was the old date from two thousand and eleven. So what we're saying is anybody who had a business license for massage therapy on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven can continue without having to comply with the new state rules.
And, and the new state rule is written in, in this ordinance?
No, the new state rule is written in the state law, but it's referred to. And, and so new people who come in would, to want to get a business license for massage therapy would have to have the certificate from, and I forget the acronym.
And that's the state law?
Yes.
All right, then I, I, I understand it then. Thank you. So I, I will make the motion.
Well, I think you should ask for public comment.
That's a good idea. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment, Fred?
Since I don't know the definition of a physical therapist...
A massage therapist.
There you go. See, you caught me. And that is, what's the difference?
Between what and what?
A physical therapist and a massage therapist.
A lot of hours, a lot of classes.
Well, I can come to town and become a physical therapist. There's a bunch of them.
Physical therapists are licensed by the state, and they go through a great deal of testing to become a physical therapist.
Are their requirements more strenuous?
Yes, they are, extreme, they are...
Well, I don't know that. You may, you may not think you know that, but I don't know that. But I'm worried about all these other little tentacles by, just because of a different name. They can come to town and basically do the same thing, see? So I'm worried if you guys are a mile deep but only one inch wide in this ordinance. That's my concern.
Short answer is no.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Is there any discussion? Does anybody would like to make a motion?
I will make the motion. To what Roy said. Ordinance next in order, paragraph B.
Is there, is there a second to that motion? I'll second it. It's been moved in...
So, so the intent is you would like us to bring back an ordinance?
Well, what they're doing is they're introducing for first reading now and substituting the language I read in for paragraph B, and it'll be on for second reading at the subsequent council meeting.
Okay, would, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jamison?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
That passed with a five-oh. Thank you very much. Is there any other items on the consent calendar anybody would like to pull? Seeing none, then we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is...
Don't we have to vote on the agenda item, on the? We have to vote the rest?
Yes, that's right, we have to vote the rest of it.
I, I make a motion, we accept agenda items A, C, and D.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. I want you to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Skid?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes, and that's passed with a five-oh.
Did you miss your nap today?
Well, I, this, this massage thing got more complex than I thought it should be, you know. What can I say? Yeah, I just confused them. Well, it was clear up here. Onto item seven, you read the, would you read that item, please, Lisa?
Item seven, professional services agreement for the water, wastewater rate study.
Staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and members of the city council. Sandra Featherson, your administrative services director. Tonight I'm talking to you about a professional services agreement for a water and wastewater rate study. The current rates that were implemented as part of the Prop two-eighteen process back in November two thousand and eleven expire at the end of November two thousand and sixteen. So the city wants to go ahead and move forward with another rate study on the water and wastewater rates. Staff don't have really that expertise, and so we issued an RFP to several consulting firms, and we received five responses. Those responses were from a firm, the following firms, Water Consultancy, FCS Group, Bartle Wells Associates, Corolo, and NBS. After evaluating all the proposals, and it's not just price, that's the only factor, we look at their references, doing similar types of projects, the scope of the work they've done, and their references. Staff is recommending that we approve a professional services agreement with Bartle Wells Associates in the amount of fifty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, and authorize execution of the agreement by the city manager, and also recommend that he be able to approve any change orders within the contingency amount of ten thousand dollars. We have funded this in the fiscal year sixteen, seventeen budget, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions to the staff report?
Yes. On the, I think it's the, the last page of the actual report, we talk about the storm water management plan. Are they going to give us some numbers of how we can handle the cost of that also, or what are they going to do?
Yes, as part of the RFP, we ask that they include a technical memo to address the storm water program and future issues, and potentially how to resolve that and those ongoing costs. So that is a part of the overall proposal and scope of work.
And what about the water basin study that we have, we are going to be a part of? Is that going to be included in this at all? No, that's separate. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is there going, do you know if there's a, a breakdown, a percentage breakdown on where they're getting the rate from? As far as the result, whatever they give us for the rate, you know, capital improvement and other...
You, you'll see that. The report, I think from the last one, was probably about a hundred and twenty pages long. So you'll see all the background of where they, where they identify the rates. The CIP piece of that, the operating piece, all of that will be included in the, the information they give you. And, and once, once we sign this agreement and move forward, they've, the way the RFP was written is they, they ask us for a base of information based on our billing history and things, and we're going to provide that to them. And then they're going to formulate a plan, and then we'll come before the city council in workshop format to talk about how they're going to move forward with the, with the rate study, so.
And, and the council will be able to give them guidance on council policy decisions and that. So you, you, depending on how the vote goes, the, the council as a whole won't see a, a final product that includes things that they don't want included by way of capital projects and things like that. This isn't a top-down from the expert rate study. They're the experts in accumulating the information and figuring out what rates you have to charge to accomplish the goals that you want. But you will remain in charge of all those goals as the process goes on.
Any other questions, staff? Thank you. Now we'll go to the public for public comment. Fred Koval?
Mayor and city council members, Fred Koval, solving. You know, many times I've gotten up before you and said, I'm going to have four water bills, and you know what they are. Do from ID number one, and went from you. In fact, I can't drink the water, I have to buy bottled water. Yeah, I know, it's going to cost me a million dollars to make a flip. Okay. However, every five years, the old adage is every new broom sweeps clean. You feed these guys data. We have to pay $50,000 plus for their study. You add that on to our water cost, to our bill. And some years, former city councils have rejected the study and gone it alone. And I think with all of the historical data that this city has over the years, that the finance department could easily do the job for a lot less money, for under $5,000, one tenth the cost. And it should be considered as an alternative. And it should have been asked of the staff, how would they go about doing it? How long it would take them? How much personnel would be devoted to this? And I'm sure there would be some lawyers involved. But I don't see it. Why not? I also look at the details of the RFP, and I want to know why they're asked to look at other communities to see how they charge, what approach they took. What has that got to do with our, our particular situation? It's beyond me. When I read through that RFP, it just seems like it's something that's just gets put out, just change the dates and put it out. Nobody's ever really read that RFP. Not recently. I don't know who did it, how much time was put into it? And what was the wherewithal to put it together? Did they cop, copy some other cities? Sometimes they have. And we always have a different agency every year do this report, and it always comes out different. Now, you know, five years ago, what was it all about? The commercial guys got a break, and more of the rates were put on the backs of the residential consumers. Why? Why? Was that, is that going to be the case again? Or is it going to go in a different direction? Are the residential folks going to get a break, and the commercial guys who get to write it off as an expense? I wish I could, but no. Should that be taken into consideration? Now, I don't know how much the commercial guys are saving in water compared to the residential. You might have given it to us as a breakdown in the past, but I really don't know what it is. Is it beneficial? I'm tired of paying too much as a resident in this city. Something needs to be changed. Something radically needs to be changed. Why are we just focused on one kind of income? Tourism? You know, the sales tax, the property taxes, the bed tax belongs to the residents of this city. And you're supposed to be the guys that make the proper decisions. Sometimes I don't think. You think about the residents. We need a change.
Thank you, Fred. I have no other speakers left. Does anyone else wish to comment? Karen?
Good evening, mayor, council, and city management and staff. I'm Karen Waite, Solvang city resident, intended candidate for Solvang City Council. I, having been the president of Board of Trustees for ID one for four, two years, on the board for four, I, I'd like to address Mr. Koval's comments regarding third parties and RFPs. I, I feel I'm going to have to differ with Fred here. I feel it's very important to have a third party come in to give an opinion, especially when it involves possible rate changes for residents and, and users. Absolutely can't be done in-house. Conflict of interest would be the first thing I would think if I was a resident and I saw the city doing their own rate study. So I completely agree with you putting out the money to hire someone to do this for you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Does anybody wish to jump on this first?
I have a question for staff again, before I, before I make it my comments. Now, this is in, implement, being implemented in regards to Proposition 218, correct?
Yes.
And is there a state requirement for communities to, or entities to review their water rates or their, their various rates through the system? Or can we not raise our water rates? Or is there some requirement for this, various entities to review their rates? I think probably this is going to come from Mr. Hanley.
You are a party to a water supply agreement with Improvement District Number One. That water supply agreement requires that all of the defined operational costs and, which includes maintenance, purchasing of water, et cetera, be paid for by the rate. You also have pursuant to that water supply agreement, a pass-through rate covenant that you have to comply with. So although, we had the, this discussion, we were talking about funding the purchase of supplemental water, because it was legal to fund that purchase with general fund money and not make the ratepayers pay for it. That's because that was outside the definition of operational costs contained in the, the water supply agreement. But although state law would allow the general fund to pay for water, your water supply agreement does not allow you to pay for all of those defined costs, so you have to do this. Furthermore, state law, Proposition 218, which was voted in to effect by the People of the State of California, requires many things and requires compliance with its provisions. And in order to comply with those provisions, you have to have what study will be the result of this to justify what you put before the, the, the ratepayers for the protest hearing.
Thank you. I, I knew that's what your answer was going to be, but I thought for people out in the audience, they might want to know why we are going through with a rating, a, a proposal, an RFP for our authorization to review our rate structure. I am glad that we had a speaker come up and discuss that the potential for conflict of interest. This is one of these things that is, I feel it's very important to show that the city of Solvang is not out on its own, that we are pulling in a, a third person or third party to review our situation. I was involved in the 2011 rate study, and it was one of those things, it was very interesting to see what they did. The way they came up with it, the study, was as was stated it, is that they, we gave them a list of projects that we were thinking about doing. The rate study came back, says if you want to do everything, you're going to need this kind of rate. If you didn't want to do everything, it gave us a breakdown of various projects of how we were going to handle it and what the cost was going to be. And then unfortunately, we had the drought hit, which just really threw out every, all our plans out with the throwing, that basically threw the baby out with the bathwater, only that one there. But it'll be interesting to see what happens in the next couple of years. The rate study will probably be reflecting continued drought situation and hopefully rainy, rainy weather conditions. But it's something that we need to take a look at. The one thing that in our 2011 situation, we did not look at the possibility of a major drought hitting us for going on five, six years. So I really feel this is a situation where we really need to go ahead with this project. And I believe you're probably, if nobody else runs, you're going to be up here dealing with it instead of me. Does not sound like fun, but it is an item that is, I feel is very important to implement our rate structure, to see how we are going to proceed in the next five years. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Seeing none, then can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve professional service agreement with Bartle Wells and authorize city manager to execute any change orders within the contingency amount of $10,000.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes. That's passed with a 5-0. Onto item eight.
Item eight, additional Solvang library funding.
Staff report?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, at your March 28th city council meeting, you established an ad hoc subcommittee to meet with a similar ad hoc committee from the city of Buellton to look at Valleywide Library Services and its impact on each entity's libraries. The two ad hoc subcommittees have met twice since that time. Operation of the county libraries is through a four-party agreement with the county of Santa Barbara and the cities of Santa Barbara, Lampoca, and Santa Maria. For fiscal year 2015-16, the county contributed $7.80 per capita to each of the three zones to be used for the operations and acquisitions of book materials for each inhabitant of the county. Is, in, in the current fiscal year, the county is going to add another 50 cents. It's a one-time bump to the per, it's not really per capita, it was a lump sum, but it comes out to about 50 cents per capita for 12, 50, for year 2016-17. In his background, you recall the Buellton Library was part of Zone Two system until last fiscal year when it was moved to Zone One. This resulted in the splitting of the Santa Barbara County per capita funding for the two areas and sharing of the library supervisors, supervisor between the two branches. Solvang and Buellton branches are both allocated funding based on the service population of 10,525 residents. The two ad hoc subcommittees could not agree to the appropriate split for the San Inez Valley per capita funds and have requested that the Santa Barbara County put an item on the next library advisory committee to decide on the per capita split between Solvang and Buellton libraries. That meeting will be held in September of this year. The, the city of Santa Barbara is responsible for the operational budgets for Carpinteria, Montecito, Santa Barbara Central, Santa Barbara East Side, Galida, Solvang, Buellton, San Inez, and the Los Olivos branches of all the libraries. All the branches in incorporated cities do receive additional funding from those cities. The city, Buellton City Council had, had directed their staff to pursue opening their library six days a week, which would then require a full-time supervisor. In their budget hearings this last month, they allocated $50,000 to, to the library for a total of $148,541. And as you'll recall, the city of Solvang budgeted $103,750 in, in the current fiscal year. Currently, the supervisor splits time between Solvang and Buellton. Some of her time is, is associated with activities related to both branches, and some could be associated with San Inez and Los Olivos branches. Sharing of a library supervisor has resulted in stretched resources to the Solvang library. The ad hoc committee is recommending that the city council approve additional funding that would allow us, for Solvang, to return to having its own full-time supervisor. This could be accomplished with additional allocation of $20,000 in conjunction with, with using $26,711 of the approximately $64,000 in reserves that are available for Solvang library. The additional funding could come from the savings the city realized in the funding for the, the sheriff's department contract. Staff was recently informed that the contract negotiations are complete, and our annual cost for law enforcement services will be $65,000 less than what we had included in the budget. So that, that's, I don't know if the ad hoc subcommittee wants to add anything to that, but it's been a little bit of a, a discussion topic with Buellton to try to get to this point. But I think one of the things that, what we've discovered is while splitting a supervisor amongst, a library supervisor amongst two different libraries saves some salary benefits to the Solvang branch, it really does affect the operations because you have one, one employee essentially running two, two libraries, and it seems to have, as I stated, stretched the, the services that were provided in the Solvang library. So with that, that is my staff report. I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions? Go ahead.
So traditionally, this, the library is funded through what we donate for community services, correct?
We supplement. Yeah. They use, they use the per capita of the friends of the library donates. If you look at the attachment, it lists the different sources of revenue.
So are we going to recognize the library as something different if we're taking the funds from savings with the sheriff's department?
It, it wouldn't change how you recognize it. It's, you're making that commitment to a full-time supervisor funded this, this fiscal year. It wouldn't require you then continue to do that. It's not a, a commitment. There is talk of having an agreement with the county on the operation, or I mean, with the city of Santa Barbara on the operation, that you may see in the next few months come before you. But at this point, you would just be committing to funding one year of that amount.
Are we're doing this, I'm sorry?
I'd just like to clarify the one time. So it's only for fiscal year 1617 that, that the 50 cents applies? Does it come back off in the next one unless further action's taken?
Right. We were told by the county representative that that was a one-time, you know, how they, I don't know, followed the budget hearings with the counties, but they have, they all have their little pots that they use, and, and there was a, a fixed amount that went into the library as additional, but it really was not a, it's not an operating budget, it's a, it was a one-time fund to that. Now, the per capita did go up last year and stayed at that level, so there is a chance that it could continue to, to stay at that level also.
Okay. Thank you.
That, that brought the total to 830 then from the 780? The, the additional 50 cents?
Roughly 830.
Which amounts to about $400 difference in the, the overall granting to the library. The question I had, if, if Buellton just goes ahead with the hiring of a full-time supervisor and we don't, how does, how does that work?
It's sort of an all or nothing. If they would like to have a full-time supervisor, then we would have to have a part-time supervisor, which really doesn't, doesn't work as, as we were told by the, the library manager.
How is it handled?
I, I don't think it can happen. They can't have one and a half positions as a supervisor.
So the, so the idea is if, if we don't support the additional full-time, then Buellton will not have a full-time?
That's our understanding.
Okay.
And it can't, it can't be the other way? Can't be Buellton having the full-time and us, it's, it's full, it's on us, what we decide?
Yeah. We, as we understood it, you can, you can have one supervisor split between the two libraries with no additional hours, or you could have two full-time supervisors, and that's not a guarantee that you'll still have additional hours. Now, I don't know if the council's looking for an additional day or not, but-
Is that cost covered on Buellton's end?
They, they are using a portion of their reserves to cover a full-time position.
Right.
And one of the, one of the bugaboo's on it that we really don't know about, and you made, and the city manager made a reference to it, is the per capita split on the population base. And the way the county or the library split it up originally, they, for this particular area, they've come up with approximately 21,000 people serviced by the two libraries. And when they first, when the county came up last year with the original addition of Buellton into the Solvang, into the Santa Barbara system, they split that 21,000 straight down the middle. Our contention is that it should have, the split should be more- Our contention is that it should have, the split should be more of a 60, 60-40 in, in our favor, because we deal only with Solvang, we also supply the services primarily to Saninaz, Ballard, Los Olivos. Buellton is saying, well, we supply those services also, we have a discussion. There will be a meeting of the library, county, county library board, what's the?
County Library Advisory Committee.
County Library Advisory Committee in September, and we will be there, each side will be there to make their positions known. There is the possibility that this, the 50-50 split will remain, there's the possibility that it could be 45, 55-45, 60-40, in which case that would give us, or give the Solvang library branch a larger funding, amount of funding, and then Buellton's funding would go down and they would probably have to, if they still wanted to have their supervisor full-time, they would even have to come up with more money. One of the other situations that we have to talk about is that our funding right now is just, just over $100,000. Buellton is going at approximately $150,000 of support to their library. We're, and our discussion was that we were having to come up with $20,000. Now, $20,000 and 100,000, $120,000, which is basically $30,000 short of the 50-50 split. That additional $30,000 is actually, is being made up by the Friends of the Library of Solvang, which has a very strong Friends of the Library organization in Solvang. So that funding, if we add our 20,000 to the 100,000 we already have, plus the 30,000 that the library, Friends of the Library have, that will bring us up to the $150,000 equal with, with Buellton. And in theory, notice I said in theory, that should give us enough funding for both Buellton and Solvang to have a full-time supervisor at, at both facilities and at least maintain, well, I won't say, at least, hopefully maintain our existing hours of operation at our facility. And that's, that's where we're going from there. I think I hit every, isn't?
Well, I, I think you have one thing that's maybe not correct. The additional funds were going to be taken out of the reserve.
Out of the?
Out of the reserve, not from the Friends of the Library. There's a reserve of $63,000 that Solvang has, and there's a reserve of 53,000 that Buellton has, and we were going to take 23,000 out of our reserve to make up the difference.
But there was also, the, the?
Friends, the Friends contribute, but that's already in the whole, if I'm correct, it's, the Friends should know this, but that's already in the budget, we're already accounting for that $20,000.
We only give 20, we don't give 30,000.
Okay.
We give 20,000. 20,000, right, and that's what it says here in the numbers, yeah.
But it's one of these things that if, and it's?
And there's also another thing, Eddie, that we need to talk about, there's a possibility that they may come to the public to ask for some kind of special district being formed within, and I don't know how they're going to do it.
Hope the high school.
Well, but they're having, they're having problems with how they're going to create it, the, the legal aspects of it are kind of being not friendly to what they want to do. So they have to study it with county council to determine what the districts can look like. And then we would come to the, come to the public for a tax, here we go Fred, another tax, to support the library.
And there is, at this time, in, on this, in November, there is, in the city of Galita, they?
No, no, they're not doing it.
Did they pull that off?
No, they got shut down because of this reason, they do not, legally, they cannot do what they want to do because the district is not.
This discussion is getting astray of what we're supposed, we're supposed to be asking for staff comments, staff questions?
Sorry.
This discussion goes on after we get back from the public comment, so we can discuss it. Is there any other questions of the staff?
Yes, this reserves that we're taking out, that's general fund money?
Not, it's not Solvang's general fund reserves, it's, it's reserves at, in the county budget that the county nominally allocates to the Solvang branch of the library system.
Okay.
Actually, city of Santa Barbara who operates the library, yeah. It's, it's in that pot of money, each city has a, a small reserve in their, their.
But it's in, in their pot rather than?
It's in their pot, it's not contributed through us, yeah.
Okay.
So the extra 20,000 would theoretically come from your reserves, it's coming from the city, the general fund reserves for that 20,000, yes.
Okay.
And it's, it gets confusing, and I, I don't know that I'm going to be able to clear this up, but, because I don't get it right all the time, I just messed up in terms of the, the city of Santa Barbara pursuant to, I imagine they have an agreement with the county, runs portions of what we think of as the library system. So although we refer to the Buellton library and the Solvang library and other libraries, those aren't actual legal entities, those are physical locations. And the funding comes basically by general fund decisions of all the different entities involved, and it's not legally mandated that any of them do that. And so it's all subject to change and all subject to not going as planned by all parties. I'm not ascribing evil motives to either the city of Santa Barbara or the county, it's just that whenever we make any of our budget projections, like the, the city and the county have to do with the libraries, those are just projections and sometimes things change. So, yeah, where everyone's making their best guesses yet, and everyone's trying to act in good faith to keep libraries open because they all see them as valuable functions. But it's, Solvang library isn't your library any more than the Buellton library is Buellton's library, and it's, it's just all a sticky wicket.
And the finances are crazy.
Yes.
How it's all handled, it's every time we look at a sheet of paper, the numbers magically change.
Right, for instance, when the, when the, is it the county that talks about the per capita? That's, that's a determination by the county of how much money they're putting in from their general fund. There isn't a law out there that says the people of this area are taxed X dollars per capita for the library, that's just a description of how they get to the dollar amount that they're going to spend. And the county has, I mean, they have vast responsibilities beyond a, a city's responsibilities, but that's just, you know, how they describe it, it's not like there's really a per capita tax out there that pays for the function.
But that's where they're, what they're thinking about doing, if they can create some, some mechanism.
If, if the people will vote for a mechanism that could be legally put forward, then there would be some form of tax, and that tax would be dedicated to an actual library entity.
And it used to be the state of California gave us quite a sum of money for our libraries, but they don't do that anymore.
Are there any more questions of the staff?
So if Buellton and Solvang are one and the same now, why are we separating the supervisor position? Would it be an MOU or something, some kind of agreement that we'd have to have with, with them to guarantee, like, is there a chance of them not having a full-time supervisor and us having a full-time supervisor, so how does that work?
No, back to that, it's, it's two full-time supervisors or one split supervisor, that's, that's.
That's an agreement that we have?
No, that's how the city of Santa Barbara has said, that, that we can't operate, we can't operate one and a half, if you would think of it that way. We have to have either one full-time that's split amongst the two branches, or two full-time at each, one at each branch.
Okay.
It is not, it is not our decision, it is the city of Santa Barbara library.
And we don't have an MOU with Buellton, we don't have an MOU with the city of Santa Barbara, nor do we have one with the county. Solvang has just been making, we call them grants, but it's been a decision to expend general fund on the library, but nobody's legally bound to do so.
Any other questions of staff? If not, we'll take it to the public for comment. I have Fred Koval. It's your turn. Followed by Shirley Stacy.
Members of the city council, Mayor Fred Koval, Solvang. So I hear, I heard it mentioned that our library supports Saninaz, Ballard, Los Olivos, and you want to expend our funds, my funds, and the reserves for that. So, you know, you, you look at the, at the data page here, it's pretty interesting, nobody's even questioned these numbers, Johnny says they change. Holy cow, you know, when you look at computer sessions, they're down. 17,000, 10,000, 8,600. Why are they down? Wifi sessions have gone through the ceiling, that's probably because that's, they got wifi in about that period of time, maybe it was before that, but they've gone way up. If you look at the square footage of the Solvang library, how much is devoted, they've got it crammed in, the internet stations. That's what they're being used for, that's what that's being used for, that library. You know, you look at, at program attendance, it was up a little bit, 13, 14, now it's back down again. Now, where are, I, I have no idea how many real Solvang people, citizens, kids, families, really use that library on a consistent basis. I'd like to know times per week, and who, who are they, by numbers? Is it 10, is it 20, is it 50 people that are consistent? Is that what we're going to support? There's no details here, there's no guts. You know, when we look at fines and fees, well, I know that the fines, they look the other way on. I'd like to see fines and fees broken down here, and why fines aren't kept up. Why, why are people getting a, getting, getting a deal on fines? That needs to be emphasized. And, and I just don't see this, this CPA work and how we want to each be 50% or 60% or 40%. How you guys come up with these numbers? It, it doesn't follow for this engineer, okay. Now, you take a look at this, and then you hear from the city attorney that there's no agreements, everything here, for anything, no contractual agreements. It's all, well, I think the libraries, whoever's running that library should get their ore in the water and say, I need a contract, I want to have some maturity here, instead of coming begging. There needs to be, in summation, there needs to be a transition plan for that library. We need to step up to the plate of technology. You go to the elementary school, somebody said here that, oh, the Solvang Elementary School doesn't have a library, they don't need one, they don't need anything, why? Because they've got a huge, major laptop, desktop, internet facility where they're teaching technology to the kids. The interface to the rest of your life is a keyboard, and they're doing it, they know how to do it. Those kids know how to type without looking at that keyboard, and that's what they're going to need to survive. And I asked this city council to, to step up to the plate, to rethink what the future is for our kids. The library as we see it today is not the answer.
Thank you Fred. Shirley Stacy?
Mayor Richardson, members of the city council. I, I had something written out here, but I'm going to depart from that a little bit to answer some of Fred's points. First of all, the library is much more than technology, much, much more. We did fund improvements in technology, Friends of the Library did, and I can't, I can't tell you exactly how much money we've put into that, but quite a bit. Saninaz Library and Los Olivos Library use their own funds for their own libraries, the per capita includes Saninaz and Los Olivos. Fred mentioned that in 13, 14, attendance was up, and do you suppose that could be because there was a full-time supervisor there at that time? Yeah, I think that's, that's what you would find. There is a contract actually, between the county and the three cities that run the library system, and we just signed off on that as, as the county library advisory committee recently. We didn't, but the people, the people that need to sign, the officials. So there is a contract. I don't know if I covered, I don't think I probably covered all the points you made, but I would like to go on to say what I had planned to say. I have been involved with the library, with library issues for a long time. We had dreams once of a bigger facility that would accommodate a variety of activities, including computers. Unfortunately, we encountered more obstacles than we could overcome. David Goldstein has brilliant drawings of what the library could be, be four times the size, it had a lot of room for computers, it had study halls, individual rooms for tutoring and study groups, it had children, a children's area, and a, a room for community meetings, so, and bathrooms too. Anyway, so that was a dream. We unfortunately encountered more obstacles than we could overcome. We continued in spite of everything to provide funds for a quality program and made improvements as the budget allowed. There were improvements in technology, new signs out front, a new patio screen so that it could be used to create more usable space, just to name a few. Recently, we have had to face a more serious obstacle, and I'm sure you realize what I'm referring to. We have, we have lived with a half-time supervisor for a year, which has made us realize how important that position is. Programs and services have suffered as a result. Actually, as you are well aware, it is not just the position, it is the person in that position that makes the difference. If there is any way that the necessary funding can be found to restore the full-time supervisor position, we will see the library begin to restore the quality program and services that it had before the recent loss of funding. You have shown that you value the library by significantly increasing this year's allocation. I hope that you value what it does for the community enough to make a, a commitment to fund the supervisor position as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you Shirley.
Shirley?
Yeah.
Just so people know, the, could you just list the three cities that the county contracts with the library?
It's Santa Barbara, Lampoke and Santa Maria.
So each one of those cities has the contract, and then we, the libraries in the Saninaz Valley are, I believe in Zone 1, which is part of the city of Santa Barbara.
Santa Barbara, right, uh-huh.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I have no other speaker slips, does anyone else wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. I'd like to, to say first off, that since the library board is going to be meeting to make a decision on the distribution of the funding, that we, that we table this item until after their meeting. I, I'm concerned about the expenditure that they're coming back for a second bite at the apple, and so- Uh, and so, and, and until we know the, the actual funding that's going to be given us because of the library council meeting, I'd like to see us, uh, table this item until after that time.
Eleven September.
Is there any comments on that?
Can I comment? Or is it just council? It's far neither. She's on the advisory committee, she probably knows-
I, I know, I know she's on the advisory committee. And, and, and the decision that they're going to make is going to be determining how much, how, how the funds are going to be distributed, which is going to impact our-
I don't think the advisory committee gets to make decisions though.
Well, actually, I think they've said this year it is the fifty-fifty split. That was for, maybe that how, was that-
They said that we could, that we would be allowed to make a presentation at the September eleventh meeting to discuss whether or not that that was the way it should be.
Okay.
Because if you look at the numbers, it's actually sixty, forty, all the way down. Sixty to Solvang, forty to Buellton. If you go through the, the percentages that Jessica? Jessica gave us, you know. We're responsible for Los Olivos and San Andres. If you include them in our percentages, it goes from thirty-nine to sixty and leaves Buellton at forty. Same with the pop, the population. I don't understand how they do that. I don't understand where the magic line is that they determined that Buellton has the same amount of people that come to their library as we do. I, I, I don't think people from San Andres, Ballard, and Los Olivos drive through Solvang to go to the library in Buellton. I'm sorry, I don't think that happens. Um, Carrie has done an outstanding job this year trying to keep it all together. And we can't ask her to do that anymore. It's just an impossible task. And I would be, I would like to see us support, um, the full-time supervisor. I think that shows the strength that we have and we believe in the library. And when we go to the advisory committee, we can say, okay, this is what we've done. This is why we've done it. Look at your numbers. These are their numbers. These are not our numbers. And you figure out the math. And if they look at the numbers and the distributions and the percentages, they cannot deny Solvang the sixty, sixty, forty split. It would be ludicrous. It would be criminal.
Are there any other comments?
I'm in support of, um, the, um, Solvang having a full-time supervisor. Um, and I feel the same way about the per capita. Um, something else I'm curious about, and this is, this is about just plain old dollars. And, um, you know, Buellton's kicking in at a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, we're in, in the game right now, one, one oh three, seven fifty. Uh, we put another twenty on there that's, um, no, you can do the math.
One twenty-three.
And this is all general funds money. Okay. Anybody have, like, any clue what Buellton spends on chamber slash visitors bureau conference?
Nothing.
I bet it ain't close to the three-quarters of a million we spend between the chamber and the, um, and the visitors bureau. And we promote Solvang, yes, but the valley benefits from it. You know, you folks worked hard for TOT in Solvang. Um, and, and that was, you know, to, part of it was going to go fund-
Library.
-the visitors bureau and bring more people into Solvang, but also the valley. So, I would just be real curious if, um, it looks like Buellton's being very generous to the library, but are they indeed? Anyway, I, um, yes, I think Solvang needs to have a full-time librarian. I really do.
Are there any other comments?
Uh, the only comments I'm going to make are that, uh, we are, as the city manager said, that we've come up with the county, with the sheriff's department has come back coming at sixty-five thousand dollars less uh, than last year for the contract. So, we do have a, uh, area where we can pull the money out without affecting our reserves. Uh, and this would also, at the same time, give us a chance to go in and make open discussions with the, uh, library, of the, the city library of Santa Barbara to, uh, have a more formalized relationship with, uh, between the city of Solvang and the city of Santa Barbara in regards to their library, which would make it a, pardon me, a, uh, situation where the, it's, uh, more reliable or, uh, situation on funding, so the library would not have to come back as, uh, requesting a yearly grant. That we would actually make them, uh, set up somehow as a, an actual line item on our budgets instead of a, a, an item that comes in on our discretionary budget. But I see we have the, we do have the money available. And by having this, by granting the, the increase in funds to generate a full-time supervisor at the library, I think it would strengthen our case in the, at the September eleventh meeting that we are going out and making an effort. We want this library here. And going through their numbers that we actually do deserve a sixty, forty split on the, uh, per capita, uh, which, if we got a sixty, forty split on the per capita, would, it's not a huge amount, but it would still be a substantial amount to the library system of Solvang. But I think it's something we really need to do. And, uh, in regards to Fred's talking about the new internet and wifi, uh, one of the big users of the library and is in the internets, uh, internet and wifi are, uh, yes, the Solvang schools do have a very good system on their computer labs right now. But a number of the, uh, students of the Solvang school now are minority students. And a lot of these particular students do not have, their families do not have the resources to have the, a computer and internet in their households. And they are u- utilizing the library, uh, uh, facilities there. And it would be nice if we were able to expand those facilities. But they are being used by those facilities, by our, those students and by our population. And it is a very busy library. Uh, if you want to go down someday and just sit in the library for a couple of hours and see how many people come in, uh, into that library, that are locals, I think you would be amazed how many people come in and out of that library on a daily basis. And that's my comments.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yeah. I like to look at a savings as a true savings and not, uh, look at a savings as a way to try and find more ways to spend money. Um, that's my concern with, with, uh, how we're viewing that. Um, but I also believe that the three-quarters of a million dollars that's being spent on the visitors bureau could also be, uh, adjusted. And with that, I'm on board with a one-year, um, uh, full-time supervisor. But I think we need to really look at this seriously and figure out a real sustainable way to, uh, fund this if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this. And maybe, you know, revisit some things that we've done in the past and, and better our position, uh, position for the community services. That's all.
I, I didn't say I was opposed to a full-time librarian. I am, I am in favor of a full-time librarian. However, I'm concerned about the cost. Uh, and not knowing what the library recommendation, the library board recommendation is going to be, uh, if it was in our favor, we may not need to spend the entire twenty thousand. That's my thinking. Uh, I think that, uh, that hoping that the board will see our side of it because we kick, kick money into it is, is dubious. Uh, there's a, there's a, it's a political board. Uh, and there's, I know there's one vote that's in favor of Buellton and not in favor of Solvang. And no telling about the rest that are on that board. Uh, than how they would vote. Uh, so I think that by us saying, well, we'll kick in the money, that that's going to guarantee us-
Oh, I never, I never said that.
A favorable, a favorable, uh, result. I think that's, that's a little wishful thinking. And, uh, but I will, uh, I'll go along with what the, what the council wants to do. Uh, can I have a motion one way or the other?
Okay, just, just a thought Jim. Could we say up to, up to twenty thousand?
That would be, uh, that would be a, a good way to look at it, you bet.
But that's all we were asking for from the city anyway. We were going to ask for the, the reserves to make up the difference. The reserves that, that the library holds, to make up the difference.
Okay, so we, we, we were asking up to twenty thousand dollars rather than-
From the city.
We're, we're not asking for a full twenty-
Right.
Right now, okay.
For one time.
One time, okay, up to twenty.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
The motion's been made and seconded. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Uh, yes. That passes with a five, five oh.
Five oh. The five oh nine.
Hey, our heart's in the right place.
As an aside to that, for a future item for discussion, uh, I'd like to see somewhere on the future agenda a, uh, item where we maybe set up, try to set up a, a meeting with the city of Santa Barbara to start discussing, uh, a situation where we can have a more, uh, a, a, a sta, uh, an id, uh, situation where the funding of the Solvang library is a more stable situation. And that would satisfy Mr. Koval in, in that it would be a contract or a, an MOU between the city of Solvang and the, uh, city library of Santa Barbara.
And it's my understanding that they're going to approach us on that. They're, the city attorney of Santa Barbara is reviewing their document right now to submit to us.
Okay.
Bear in mind that the other city's viewpoint of funding certainty may be your pocket.
Yes.
Yes.
Exactly. Uh, there is no other items on the agenda. Unless anybody has any more comments, we will adjourn.
What, no meeting from the, uh, the committee reports?
No what?
I can go home and watch the, go home and watch reruns of the Tour de France. No, I liked Tour de France yesterday.